And good morning, everyone, and happy new year to everybody. Glad to have everyone here, made it through another year. We're going to start another year and do awesome things by the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. This is our January 2nd, 2024, first meeting of the year. However, if I could take a moment just to have a moment of silence, we lost two individuals in our community. We lost Ms. Lenora T. Wiseman, who owns Wiseman's Mortuary. She's an African-American businesswoman in this community, has led this community for an awful long time, and she passed over the holidays. And Mr. James Christian, who was alderman out at Spring Lake, passed away. He was a long-term alderman there. We can have a moment of silence for both of those individuals. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we will have, I'll call the meeting to order and have our invocation by Commissioner Marshall Fairclough.
Let's stand as we honor God and country, please.
Gracious heavenly Father, once again, we ask your blessing on our meeting, Lord, as we gather the first day, first business day of this new year. We thank you for the blessings of the past year, and we thank you for the promise of the year to come. We ask now that your hand be with us as we deliberate the business of our county, that the things that we do will be pleasing in your sight and in the sight of our constituents. I ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. It is always a pleasure when we get to recognize our county and our employees. This is a presentation on behalf of the Partnership for Children. And I would tell you that I went to the ceremony, and Cumberland County stood out, heads and shoulders, and you will see the number of recipients we got for the Act of Kindness. And I think this is what the Partnership for Children has done over the years. They gave them out to a number of people in the community, but I don't think any organization, one organization, got as many as Cumberland County. So I'm going to ask Danielle from Partnership for Children, Ms. Sonnenberg had another engagement, so she's coming here to present. Dr. Green, who is going to get one of these awards, we're going to ask our assistant manager, Heather Skeens, to stand in. You know, everybody enjoys the holidays, and you can't, when planes get off and take off, they come late, they come early. And so sometimes they come a little late, and her plane was late getting in, but we do want to make sure we honor them. I would tell this board, on that night, I stood real, with my chest stuck out because of the amount of things that our county has done over the years. So I'm going to give it over to Danielle.
Good morning and happy new year. County Commissioners, I'm Danielle Malvesti, the Community Relations Specialist with Partnership for Children of Cumberland County. Thank you for allowing me a few moments today to speak on behalf. It is a privilege to be here in front of you today. Unfortunately, Mary Sonnenberg is sick, so I am here today, and I'm honored to be here. I was a part of the 30th anniversary celebration, and there's a lot of really great work that's being done by the county and by a lot of people in our, in our community. And so it's a pleasure to honor certain individuals and entities today. Just to give you a little backstory, the partnership has been around since 1993. We've been providing services for young children and families, our smallest citizens, and it's a privilege to do that work every day, but we can't do it alone. And because of that, we would like to honor a few individuals who have gone above and beyond over the years, since the beginning of the time that the partnership began its great work in 1993. So I would like to first begin with Dr. Jeanette Council. Okay.
Dr. Council will stand right here.
So Dr. Council is a partnership pioneer. She has always advocated for children. As a former educator, Dr. Council knows the importance of supporting families and young children, and how critical early education is. As a partnership pioneer, she is happy to share stories with you about how she was part of the group that lifted up our organization. More than 30 years later, we are standing at the foundation she helped to build. Thank you, Dr. Council, for your vision, your expertise, and kindness in ensuring young children in our community have every available option to start kindergarten-ready and prepared to learn. We thank you for always going above and beyond, for showing up for our smallest citizens and for our mission. And also wanted to let you know also that Belinda will be contacting me personally to bring your award to you.
And with that, the County Board of Commissioners will give a certificate. Oh, Lord. Certificate of appreciation. This is going to be interesting to read. This is to certify that Dr. Jeanette Council, or is that where they all say? That was going to be an adventure right there. It's hereby, and I got new glasses over the holidays, too. Y'all see that little blue on there? It's hereby awarded the highest designation of appreciation for her dedication to the community of Cumberland County for performing acts of kindness which impacted and benefited young children and their families. The Cumberland County Board of Commissioners acknowledge and celebrate the efforts of her commitment and leadership dated the second day of January 2024. And for all of us, I'm going to hold it up. I think the Department of Social Services brought theirs. And this is the Act of Kindness that was given out by the Partnership for Children. So I'll let the...
And let me also go on to announce Cumberland County Department of Social Services. As a community partner, our Department of Social Services supports families and young children through programs and services. Over the past 30 years, our collaboration with DSS has ensured families with young children have the resources they need, both in and outside of their home. Our friends at DSS have been working with us for decades to ensure that parents who are attempting to find work are in school full-time or may be experiencing a crisis can access high-quality childcare for their children, and either, at either a reduced cost or at no cost to them, to subsidize childcare. Ensuring families have the support they need is the ultimate kindness, and we thank you for always collaborating with us, helping to propel our mission, and always being there for our youngest citizens and their families.
We're getting a picture this morning.
All right, I'm going to give you guys...
I'm going to get a picture. You can come in there.
There you go.
They do the work.
Sweeten them.
Okay.
Yeah, y'all stand up, too. We have the same, I'm not going to repeat it again, but we also have a certificate from the Board of Commissioners for the Cumberland County Department of Social Services. Thank you all for what you all do. You all make this county look good, and that's not an easy job in terms of what you all do at the Department of Social Services. Every single day, you show up for work and you do that. Thank you so very much.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks. Thank you. What did John do?
Got Glenn's best side, that's it.
I heard that back there.
Thank you. So even though Dr. Green could not be here today, she was honored on December 14th at our award ceremony. Thank you, Heather, for stepping in. Dr. Green, as you all know, Dr. Green is the Public Health Director, who saw us through many challenges during the pandemic. But what you may now know about Dr. Green is she shows up. Anytime we need her help or guidance on programs or resources for families with young children, she is always there. She serves on our Family Connect Advisory Committee and participates in invaluable ways with our organization. And while we all know how busy she is, she always makes time to show her kindness. So Heather, thank you for being here on behalf of Dr. Green, and we honor her.
Thank you, and thank you. We're going to give Dr. Green hers in person when she comes, so we'll be able to do that certificate when she can. I'll push you over to the side. You have any other remarks?
Just one more. And even though Amy Cannon is retired, we all know the invaluable work that Amy Cannon has done over the years. She was also honored on October 14th, and we would be remiss without mentioning her. Amy, as a native of Fayetteville, has seen our community through many changes in her 32-year career in local government. We are fortunate that her service with our organization has been longstanding and still continues today. Her years of dedication to the partnership include board and committee service and her overseeing of our grants allocation panel. We have benefited from her practical mindset and her ability to see the big picture of how supporting our mission dovetailed into other community programs and resources to build a stronger county. So on that, we thank Amy Cannon for all of her years of invaluable service. And I just would like to leave you on one note. In the words of Rita Pearson, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." And those that we mentioned today do just that. They're champions for children, and we thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
And we want to thank the Partnership for Children for being able to recognize our employees and our Department of Social Services. It shows you that it's not something that we take for granted, giving back to the community, and it shows throughout the organization, from the top when Amy Cannon was the county manager, through Social Services, through our Director of the Health Department, as well as our County Commissioner. So leadership starts at the top, and it happens, and it shows for that. So we thank the Partnership for Children. We'll continue to be a partner with those, our children, our most valuable resource in this community, and we're going to take care of those. Our last, but not least, recognition, oh, it always is an honor to recognize the library. My Board of Commissioners say I just live in the library, but that's probably true. Marley, come on up. I will butcher her last name. Melonconny?
Melchoni.
Melchoni, there you go. And we have our, oh, she got her award, too. And we've got Faith Phillips, who is our Director of our library. Irene Graham's, I think you were on the library board, or was on the library board?
The chair is here.
Oh, the chair is here. Come on up. All of y'all, come on up from the library. All y'all from the library, come on up. Yeah. And if you haven't been to the headquarters library and looked at that second floor, I would encourage everybody to go down to the library. I was pretty sure that in the next election of, where the Partnership for Children give out these awards, it's probably going to come to the library for what they've done for those children on the second floor of the library. But on November 30th, 2023, Ms. Marley was Executive Assistant to the Library Director, was recognized by the North Carolina Public Library Directors Association as the North Carolina Public Libraries Directors Association Friend of the Year for her work supporting the Cumberland County Public Library through the Friends of the Cumberland County Public Library Incorporated. She was honored with an award based on nominations from several Friends of the Board members and former library trustees. She has shown unwavering dedication to the success of both organizations, and dedication has been a key factor in the Friends' continued support of the library and library program. So on behalf of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, it is hereby awarded the highest designation for appreciation for her dedication to the community of Cumberland County, for her services and dedication to the Cumberland County Public Library and the Friends of the Library Program. The Cumberland County Board of Commissioners acknowledge and celebrate the efforts of her commitment and leadership dated the second day of January 2024. And I will hold up her award for everyone to be able to see. I tell you, it's just a way to start off the new year, in terms of that. I will give Faith, if you would like to have a few remarks, and Chairman of the Library Board.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say a little bit about our Friends of the Cumberland County Public Library and the work that Merrily has done. So Merrily has worked with the Friends for years, working on minute-taking, organizing books, and just everything, financials. And because of the work that Merrily and our Friends of the Cumberland County Public Library do, we are able to have the programs for the library that most of our community enjoy. Our summer reading program, our winter reading programs, the wonderful prizes that you all see, it's all because of the Friends, and it's all because of Merrily. So thank you all so much for that, and thank you, Merrily.
And I just want to add that my time with Merrily goes back more than 10 years, and I was kind of a, really was a junior novice with the Friends of the Library, and the two of us worked together, side by side, and developed a wonderful relationship. And over the years, really came to realize how important Merrily's work has been. She's just a fantastic person, very conscientious. She really is on point with everything, and a lot of times kept us very well organized. And for that, I want to say thank you, and again, congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Sure. What an honor to receive the award and to receive the recognition. It was a wonderful way to end the year, and I don't want to get emotional, but none of this would have happened without all these people here, specifically Faith, who helped develop everything and got us to where we are today. And Dennis, instrumental in kicking myself to take the job, to work for the Friends, fought my fears and went forward with it, and I'm very happy that I did, and I'm just very grateful. Thank you all.
Okay, one. One, okay, one, two, three. I'll call on the manager. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
There's one addition to the agenda. We're going to need to have a closed session to consider economic development is in it.
All right. We add that for a closed session for economic development. If that, with that, I'll get a motion to approve the agenda. If I can get a second. It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. I'll call on the County Manager for a presentation on the Cumberland County 2024 Career Fair.
Yes, as part of the compensation study, right afterwards, Dominique Hall, Human Resources Director, and several of the departments got together and started planning for a career fair. Dominique will provide a brief overview, a presentation of the career fair, and answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Chairman Adams, Vice Chairwoman Stewart, Commissioners, County Manager Greer. To everyone in their respective roles and positions, happy new year.
Happy new year.
It's an honor to stand before you today to discuss an initiative that holds immense potential for our community, the Cumberland County Career Fair. This event is not just about the job opportunities, it's about fostering transformation in the lives of our citizens. Our theme, New Year, New Career, Empower Your Future, symbolizes the fresh beginnings and endless possibilities that the new year brings. Today, I'll walk you through how this event is transformative, is a transformative experience, emphasizing not only career opportunities, but also the chance to give back and uplift our fellow citizens. We urge each of you to mark your calendars for Friday and Saturday, January 12th and 13th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Crown Expo Center. The Cumberland County Career Fair serves as a dynamic platform to bridge the gap between our community's aspirations and the abundance of career opportunities within our county. With the recent implementation of the Class and Comp Study, we are proud to showcase a plethora of vacancies and growth prospects. Beginning at 10:00 a.m. and concluding at 11:30 a.m. daily, our interview and skills training seminar promises to be an immersive experience. Attendees will have the golden opportunity to sharpen their skills, gain insights into interview process, and receive expert advice on honing career skills that set them apart in the job market. Simultaneously, we'll be shining a spotlight on different departments, allowing attendees to explore and understand various career paths in depth. Following this from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. daily, we're excited to offer mock interview assistance, providing hands-on practice and simulated interview environment with constructive feedback from our current employees and hopefully their future coworkers. Under career-focused assistance umbrella, we're not only providing services, but extending a hand to lift our citizens higher. The community interview closet giveaway is a testament to our commitment to ensuring everyone, regardless of their circumstances, has the chance to make a positive first impression. Criminal history exoneration services and military transition services are not just about removing barriers, but about giving citizens our fresh, our citizens a fresh start and supporting those who have served our nation. The professional headshot photography and resume writing assistant services are about building confidence and presenting our sentences in the best light possible. Our additional offerings are not just conveniences, they're expressions of community care. The Internet Cafe serves as a hub, allowing attendees to apply for Cumberland County vacant positions and complete any required skills testing. Recognizing family constraints, we provided, we made the Cumberland County Career Fair a kid-friendly event. Offering engaging activities for the little ones, like refreshments, will be another bonus. Additionally, we're working on transportation assistance, because accessibility shouldn't be a barrier. It's about ensuring every citizen who wants to attend has easy access to this valuable event. To ensure widespread awareness, we strategically employ marketing strategies. Our communication channels include the Cumberland County website, social media platforms, and radio interviews. Additionally, our presence in the Cumberland County, not Cumberland County, but the Cross Key, Cross Creek Mall Food Court, reinforces our commitment to reaching citizens where they are. I want to express our sincere gratitude for your time and attention. The Cumberland County Career Fair, scheduled for January 12th and 13th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is not just an event, it's a gateway to new opportunities, growth, and professional fulfillment for our citizens, and hopefully our new Cumberland County employees. Thank you for your dedication, and I look forward to creating a lasting impact on our community together. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Commissioner Keith.
So I'm a little confused. Is this for people who are interested in working for Cumberland County?
Yes, sir.
We seem to be doing a lot of work that we pay other people to do with all this job training. I mean, we have workforce development, we have NC Works, we have all these other things. I mean, why, why is Cumberland County going to share the burden of all of these headshots and resume writing and mock interviews? We pay people to do, we fund people to do that. These services, but all of a sudden, I guess if we're not satisfied with what they're doing, we feel like we have to do it on our own. Meanwhile, we have a lot of vacancies in our community. I understand the process of trying to fill these vacancies, but we talked about how we're going to fund it. I just think that we're getting away from, we're doing jobs that are not in our scope with the headshots and the mock interviews and all of the other things, and telling people about county departments. If they're going to apply to a county department, I would hope that they knew about the county department. We're, it just seems like we're doing a lot of work that is not normally in our scope. And I'd be interested in why we're, why we decided to go down this path, because we've never really done it to this level.
Sure. So it's getting all of those things in one event, and having citizens come to one place and offer all of those things to empower their future. Again, we're just making it convenient for our citizens to receive all of those services.
Do we might have any other questions? Commissioner Stewart.
I don't know if this is what Commissioner Keith is saying, but my question would be, are we just hosting the event and providing our jobs, putting our jobs out there, and other people are involved with it, or are we doing all of those things?
So it's a combination of a lot of things. We'll have our departments, they're spotlighting our jobs and trying to attract citizens to apply for our jobs. And then we're also doing a few of those things. We do have help with the criminal history exoneration services, so we do have help with the military transitioning services. But we just wanted to get an event for, and offer everything that we have to make sure that our citizens are employable, that they, they are hire-ready, and that we have them prepared to take on a position with Cumberland County.
So someone else is doing the interview skills? The photo, the headshot?
We have...
Somebody else is doing that?
Well, we have someone within Cumberland County that will be helping us with that. So that is a Cumberland County initiative.
Commissioner Boos.
Thank you. I just want to follow up on that. I was just going to ask that about photography, because we hire a photographer to come take our pictures, but our staff can go take pictures of non-employees for free and get paid, and that, those pictures are good enough for them, but they're not good enough to take our photos. It's just, I, I don't, and interview skills help. Who's going to do that? Your department?
Yes, we have someone in our department, as well as the corruptive extension is helping with that as well.
Okay. Is workforce development and all these other agencies going to be a part of this, or not?
It's just mostly Cumberland County departments and just a couple of more different ones. I don't think workforce development is one of them.
Who on your staff is an expert in writing resumes?
So that will be assistants with library. They helped us in the past, and just some of the human resources department employees are as well.
And by kid-friendly area, what...
So the kid-friendly area will have a table for those who have children, letting them be able to come in. We'll have a table that will be set up where the library will be assisting us. We'll have a couple of children's book, as well as we have a coloring book available so that they will have a chance to color.
Okay. And just two things. Do we have interpreters once someone's hired? If they, they don't understand us, except for that day we helped them fill out an application, what about when they show up working for Tony in two weeks? What bridges the communication gap then?
So we do have some in certain departments. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones.
I don't want to be redundant. He's pretty much hit the point without what I was going to ask about. I noticed on here it said sharing through partner organizations, so he kind of beat me to the question. I was wondering if workforce development or, you know, other career organizations throughout the community. So when you say partner organizations, is it just those up there, like the military transitioning services?
Yes, and the criminal history exonerating. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have any, County Manager?
Commissioners, I would, I would say this is a career fair and a expo to highlight the services that we provide and getting interested in working at Cumberland County. One of the things that we have is we have a lot of vacancies. A lot of times when we try to go through workforce development, some of the agencies that we have, they don't, we don't get the full, what we, I don't want to say what we pay for, but we don't get the full benefit of what we're trying to seek. And so this is an innovative process, thought process, to get people to come in, get some of the skills that they don't have, even if they apply with one of our county departments and they do not, are not successful, at least they have the skills to come back on a different, another time. One of the things is like the clothing. I have clothes that I would donate, I needed to donate when I was a different size. And so I would rather those, they go to someone in a county program, funded program, and somebody comes in and gets all the training, even if we didn't hire them, at least that we, we communicated and we marketed the county and the services we provide, not on, not all these services, but just what the certain, the opportunities that we have. So hopefully, this is a little different. We don't have all the... We don't have all the partners probably that we normally would have in an event like this, but it's a county-led initiative, and the departments and HR are really excited about the positive, the positive impact and the potential impact that it could have on the vacancies that we currently have.
Commissioner Jones.
How much is the cost? By any chance, if y'all know how much all this is gonna cost, marketing? Can I, can someone give me that? For this to take place? Do we know what the budget finance, what the cost is?
Right now, we don't have a total cost.
Okay.
Commissioner Keith.
Yeah, thank you. The manager, you know I respect you, but, and I'm all for helping people who can't get this, but we keep telling everybody up here, we want the best and the brightest and everything, and we're going after them, and we're actively pursuing people. But if someone doesn't know what they're applying for, someone doesn't have a headshot, someone needs to help filling out a resume, we have jobs in there, but most of the time, they're very, very low-performing jobs that we'd have. If I go through the job vacancies we have, these are higher-paying jobs that require education, at least associate's degree in most cases, with experience. But we seem to be putting all this energy down into this small section of folks. And the other side, and to the manager, I know you weren't here before, but there used to be career fairs pretty, pretty, scheduled pretty periodically there, that Social Services was doing, the Library was involved in, FTCC, and all of a sudden, because we're not satisfied or we have ourselves a little bit of an unemployment gap, that we said, oh, okay, well, we can do it better. And I just think that investing in our current people right now, maybe so they don't leave would, might, and help them with better pay and better benefits and a better work environment might be a better way to spend county dollars. It just seems to me like we've taken this, and this is way beyond our scope and our responsibility as county government, to govern people, and that's, that's all I have to say about it.
Commissioner Stewart.
Last thing I'll say is, the way I'm able to wrap my, my head around this is to consider that we're gonna be helping some people even if they don't come work for the county, is preparing them, giving them the experience, and I know it's not our job, if you will, but I think that I'm always for helping people.
And I'll wind this up.
Not that nobody else is.
Yeah, I do think this is our, our job to be able to do this, and I applaud the HR Department for doing this. And Commissioner Keith, I think you're right. Library used to do it, DSS used to do it, everybody used to do it. Now we're gonna do it in one place, so they're not taxed to be able to do that in all of those locations. And I'm gonna just tell you, I've been to a number of the job fairs out at the Crown, the ones that Workforce Development put on, and they are not centric to Cumberland County jobs. They are whatever jobs they are out there. I think this is centric to trying to fill these vacant positions that we have. I think it's being able to show them what, and I know everybody on this board, y'all, we all get called, people don't understand the difference between city government, county government, what we do, what they do. They call you about, I need my trash can pulled in, and we don't do trash. They call you about the bus system, we don't do buses. And I think this is an opportunity, not only to do the job fair, but to, I think as the manager talks about, letting folk know what county government does. And I think as the year goes on, we're gonna do some other things to be able to let elected officials, other elected officials know from other municipalities what county government does, because I think the more knowledge we put out there about what we do and what we have, and, you know, I talked to Dr. Green, I talked to my Social Services, Ms. Brenda Jackson and Faith Phillips, all of them are having tremendous, it's just difficult to hire in this day and age. I do agree, though, that as we do this, we need to have something in-house for people to be able to move up within wherever they are, that we give them the skills and the ability to be able to move up in, in those departments also. I think that's, and I think that's where you get into, hopefully, Commissioner Keith. So thank you, Dominique, and the HR Department and staff for putting this on, it's a labor, and I think it's one that hopefully will bear out some fruit for all of us. I would encourage on either one of those days for commissioners to go out there and be visible and letting folk know that we encourage them to be a part of Cumberland County Government. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
All right. That will take us to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything to take off the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved. Second?
It's been moved to second, all those in favors? All right. There are no items of business. That will take us to nominations. I'll call on Vice Chairman Stewart.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has two vacancies, and I recommend the following for nomination, Antonio Rindavera and David Brice.
Commissioner Booth.
I have two also, Louis Wood and Stacy Bolton.
Stacy, S.T.A.C.
E.Y.
Bolton.
B.O.L.T.O.N.
All right. That will take us to appointments.
The Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council has one vacancy, and I ask for a motion to appoint William Strick to the Mid-Carolina Aging Council.
We've got the motions there, second.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
There are two vacancies. I make a motion for the following individuals to the Civic Center Commission, Rocky Barnett and Nathan Cuffey.
If I can get a second. It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
And that will take us to a closed session. If I can get a motion to go into closed session for Economic Development.
So, second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor? We are in closed session. And thank you, if we can get a motion to come out of closed session.
So, second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor? If we can get a motion to adjourn. And let me do this, though. Happy birthday to Commissioner Fairclough on Friday, and our Assistant Clerk, Ms. Abba Clark. Happy birthday to you all, January fifth, Friday. All those in favor of the adjournment? We are adjourned.